On behalf of the Manona Grove School Board, we need to convene our meeting. Do we have a motion?
Except for what?
Oh, sorry, we don't need a motion. We're just here.
You can just call it order.
I can call it to order, so let me do that. Apologies, everybody.
All right.
On behalf of the Manona Grove School Board, I call this meeting to order and in session and away we go. Are there any revisions to the order of business tonight? All right, let's move on, please, public appearances. All right, that moves us to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve as presented, or does anyone wanna break anything? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Everyone in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. All right, consent agenda has been approved. That takes us to recognitions.
I do have one, but I wanna see if anyone else had anything first. Okay. All right, I would like to recognize a number of individuals. Today, we had over fifty school leaders, teachers, administrators, to work on our annual school improvement plans, our PDSA writing, and it was just a fabulous experience. You know, I, as I told the group as we wrapped up, I'm consistently impressed, you know, with the work that's done. I'd like to make special mention to Lisa Hype and Chris McCumber, who organized the day, and I thought did a fabulous job facilitating, but as well as our principals, as I said, and our teacher leaders that are part of those groups. So, it's one of those things that I cannot take credit for. That practice was in place when I started in the district, and I think we've continued it and maybe tweaked it a little bit slightly, but it's really one of the things that we should be really proud of as a district, that the teamwork involved with that.
Yay. I can say that, right? It's not very, it's not very officious, but it sounds really good. Thank you. Any other recognitions? All right.
Maybe, I was just, and I'm, Dan, maybe you can help me with the name of the program. At a meeting this morning, Josh Bassel, one of our previous teachers in the business field, who now does the Dane County partnership, came and again, has some really nice information, and we might, as a board, wanna hear more about that. But again, it's that prayer place, the kind of thing that he builds, and building relationships. And he was actually at the chamber meeting to help build those relationships through the program. And he has a nice little booklet about the program, and trying to find people that will match with the interests of the students. And it was really interesting to hear him talk about that.
Yeah. So Josh's current position is the Executive Director for the Dane County School Consortium, and so he represents and works for all Dane County schools that are part of that. But the fact that we leased the office space right next door in Nichols, the fact that he is formerly a Manona Grove High School teacher, I don't wanna say that we ain't getting preferential treatment, but it's nice having him available. But he's doing a tremendous job for all school districts and been a great resource for our staff and our students in those programs, and constantly looking at additional ways of providing more opportunities. One of the things he's done so well is looked at the available funds that are out there, state or federal grant money, and he's increased that significantly, the amount of money that's been provided to the program. So, he's doing a fabulous job.
All right, that takes us to correspondence, and in your board docs, you have a copy of the communication from Representative Hevel, and with your permission, I'd like to just read the very first paragraph. Would that be okay? Dear President Smith and members of the Manona Grove School Board, thank you for sharing your resolution with me regarding your position on legislation, which would allow firearms on school grounds and classrooms by a person with a concealed carry permit. I appreciate the time you spent discussing the effects this legislation would have on your district if it were to pass. And he goes on to have a few more details, but again, it's in your board doc. So, for me, this is appreciated because we've talked previously about having that legislative outreach piece, and so it's always nice when it's reciprocated and you feel like you're communicating and connecting. So, if you wanna read the whole thing, it's there and available for you. Any other correspondence or announcements?
We also communicated some of those issues this morning with Representative Anderson, who attended the meeting this morning, about the two, two of our major issues, gun and the, uh...
Yes.
Well, and since we're talking about the gun issue, I thi- I think that there was a lot of surprise among legislators, that in terms of what that bill would have actually done, and they were not happy about it. So I think they're, you know, it may or may not kind, and I'm not sure what the status now is of the one in the Assembly, but I, there's not a lot of popularity among them either for, so hopefully, we'll just have to keep watching that. But I appreciate the response from Representative Hevel.
And that four-hour hearing was recent.
Right. Yeah, it was, I was, that's what I was stuck in.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. That takes us to our administrative reports.
Okay. Let's listen to our superintendent's report, but Jared will join me in recording now. And the information, a lot of it, I think, is pretty self-explanatory regarding TID districts in the city of Manona, but they are looking at making some amendments, and so the school district is entitled, in fact, required to have a representative on that review board that reviews those, and Jared has been our appointment to that board, and he'll be attending a meeting shortly to review those. So, there are a number of amendments to the TID districts, the areas that are being adjusted, as well as there is a document attached about potential, one of the TIFs planned on coming off, which means some potential revenue for the district. So Jared can talk a little bit more about some of the details on that.
All right. So I'll start by discussing the upcoming joint review. So, there are four TID districts that the city of Manona would like to make some adjustments to. And some of those adjustments, all those adjustments require that all the taxing jurisdictions come together and meet, and obviously, either support it or at least notify the city of their opinion. And the taxing jurisdictions that will be coming together next Tuesday before the public hearing will be Dane County, the school district, M A T C, the state of Wisconsin, then obviously, as well as the city of Manona. And I'll just briefly walk through each of those changes quickly. So, the first one is dealing with District Number Four. So currently, District Number Four is slated to come off the books and back onto the property roll in two thousand thirty-one, and their proposal is to extend its life by four years, which is allowable by state statute. And then there's also a piece of property that's located in this TID district that has actually lost a significant amount of value, which is holding down this TID. So they're going to remove that property from the TID districts. So that's TID Number Four that we will be making a change to. TID Number Five, this is just extending the life by three years. So it was supposed to expire in two thousand thirty-four, and this would exchange, push it back to two thousand thirty-seven. TID Number Seven is, they want to, not necessarily do a re- vamp, but they're gonna remove some properties at the north end of TID Number Seven, and that will allow for this TID to get back under, under, financially under control and being able to be self-sufficient. So when it does come off the tax roll, it will be not being funded by other TIDS or the city. And then TID Number Nine is probably one of the bigger ones, and that's probably been the one that's been in the news, specifically in the city of Manona. TID Number Nine is around the Yahara River area. That's an area where they're asking for us to reset the base value. So back in two thousand and fifteen, that TID was developed in hopes that there would be a developer that would come along. Obviously, there is a developer that has came along, but during that process, the city of Manona has purchased a number of those properties, which means that once the city of Manona purchased those properties, it did go off the tax roll. So, the tax base is artificially high, so they are going to recess that and decrease it by four million dollars, which then allows that four million dollars to come back on to the roll, but it also allows for the TID to get back under control as it moves forward. Since really, the TID has been around since two thousand and fifteen, and really, the activities will start happening now in the next course of the years. So those are the four items that will be presented at a public hearing on August twenty-second, but we, as a joint review, will be meeting next Tuesday, on August fifteenth, at City Hall, at ten a.m., to go over those. The other area refers to TIF Number Two. TIF Number Two actually comes off or expires from the TID district in two thousand and eighteen, which means that it will come back on full value and all the increased value on our property taxes, our property values in two thousand and nineteen. Part of that is, is that the district will also receive some additional funds, because TID Number Two is actually probably one of the most successful ones, and that's the Pier One area. So that's where Pick 'n Save is, Staples is. And so, right now, with using the two thousand and sixteen numbers, and obviously, we have a few more years in that, the district is slated to receive approximately nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars from that. And how that's calculated is our portion of that value that's on it. So when a TID, when property is identified for a TIF district, it goes in, and that value at the time it goes in is locked in. So then, over the year, as development happens, property values increase. That value stays within the TID to pay off any debt that's been used to help with infrastructure, business initiatives to bring businesses in. As the debt is paid off, any additional funds has to be distributed percentage-wise to each of the taxing jurisdictions. And so, when we met with the city of Manona, they do believe by the time that it really comes off in two thousand and nineteen, it should be above one million dollars, but those are estimates. Obviously, property values can change. But at this point, we were aware that it was gonna come off in two thousand and eighteen. Now we're starting to get numbers to see where that revenue side of things will be.
Is that a one-time payoff, or is it continual?
Nope. So, the property value, once it goes in, will always be in our property value unless an additional TID or something occurs, but the nine hundred and thirty or the million dollars is a one-time revenue source that we get.
How much are the state aids, when TIFs go in, do we get state aids?
So depending on, for a district like us, we're a negative aided district, so this will be positive for us coming in, but it's also requiring, as a district, either you have to do a one-time expenditure to offset that, or you can put it into fund balance with the board, we'll have to determine how they would like to use those funds. Any questions on the two topics?
What? Go ahead. Go ahead, Susan.
Is that, is that an amount that we could set aside for some capital improvement at some point? Is that a...
Yes, the district, it will come in, revenue into Fund Ten.
Okay.
And so the district has full discretion in how they would like to use that money. And obviously, when property values come back in, that will also help our mill rate. So for example, you know, depending on, say, that mill rates, or if that property came off today, we would have saw approximately, from going from our estimates, about thirteen point eight-two mill rates, it would have dropped it down to a point thirteen point six. So there would have been an average house, two hundred and fifty thousand, roughly, about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars, you know, change in property taxes.
We don't have any epics coming off that, so we can build a high school, do we?
We don't have any epics.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Jared. Thank you. All right. There are no board reports tonight. We'll have those at our next meeting on the twenty-third, if there's a product. So that takes us to our action items, which for tonight is a revisit of our Architectural Services contract.
Yep. So, as you recall, the board has acted, basically approving that we complete a contract with Epstein UN Architects. Jared has been working on negotiating the final details through our attorney, and so tonight, we're asking for approval of the actual agreement. So if there are any questions about that, Jared can, you know, answer those.
So would we like to move first and then discuss? Or would you like to have Jared share information first and then have motion? Do you have a preference?
I think in, going with our precedent, what we've been asked, let's sort of receive reports, and then we can make the motion.
Great.
All right. So as the board had went in and interviewed architect firms, it was chosen that EUA or Epstein UN Architects would be selected. The proposal in forth, in front of you is the dollar amounts that they presented in their proposal, so there's nothing changed from that. We have received a list of things that, as we work through different things, if we wanna eliminate some, perhaps, community meetings or different things for them, then that price could go down. But for the purposes of the contract, we wanted to put the maximum amount. We are working with the attorneys to develop it. They're the ones that actually wrote this. The agreement, owner-architect agreement, is the actual contract, and then the other two are supplements or exhibits that go with it. It's obviously listing up the scope of service and then also the general conditions. So there's really, other than just a lot of legal information in there. And then what happens after tonight, if the board approves this contract, then that will be forwarded to EUA for them to have an opportunity to sign off, and then it will go to the attorneys for binding. And we also do have a meeting tentatively scheduled for Friday, just to start conversations.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the Architectural Services Contract with Epstein UN Architects as presented?
Also move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. So, discussion? Wow, all right.
There are no changes in the everything that's...
All right. We'll have a vote then. All those in favor of the contract as presented, please say aye. 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 All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you, Boardman Simpson. The motion is approved. Thank you. Something's in the sandwiches, maybe, I don't know.
So we're standing unanimous, Phil?
Yes. With some smart aleck on the side, yes.
Well, I was just trying to confirm.
Mr. Simpson, would you say that was a unanimous vote?
That was unanimous vote.
Thank you for confirming.
It's gonna be more unanimous.
Thank you for confirming. Joyce, is there anything we need to refresh?
Nope.
Thank you. That takes us to our discussion section. All right. So, as, as I've shared with a few of you individually, to clarify, but as stated in our agenda as well, Joyce, Dan, and myself had the opportunity to sit with Bob Butler, and he responded to some of our inquiries, clarifications, on the use of parliamentary procedure, just as one, or Robert's Rules, as one element, but just the general conduct of meetings, operating principles, et cetera. So you did receive the entire PowerPoint. You have it all. I have a few areas of focus myself, and again, this is under the discussion section, so we're not gonna be taking action or any votes, anything like that. I think what we're looking for here for the board is how to improve our function effectiveness, and there may be an opportunity for us to simply revisit our policy, because we do have policy that states that we will use Robert's Rules as our procedure. That doesn't necessarily mean every board member has the same understanding or the same desire for the same level of specificity or detail. And so, previously, I think we've had some tension around that. And as a board, I think it would be helpful for us to revisit and clarify our expectations, perhaps revisit our policy. That'll be up to us as a board. So I'm not sure exactly how to proceed here. I don't wanna do the teacher thing and walk you through a PowerPoint that... No, three of you, three of you would get up and leave, so let's not do that. That would not be great. So I think if, you know, with your permission, I would like to at least highlight a few things that were especially helpful for me to have Bob clarify, and, you know, similar to some of our other topics, I think when we've had some time to discuss tonight, I think again, to send your top priorities, concerns, ideas to Dan or myself, so again, we can prioritize and put those onto our discussion. Is that...
That's perfect. And just for a point of clarification on the handouts that are attached, there's two PowerPoints. One is the full PowerPoint, full page. The information that starts about the parliamentary procedure starts on page sixty-three of one hundred and thirty-six slides.
Yeah.
And then if you printed out the one with the notes on it, that's on page twenty-one, is where those slides begin. And that was the focus of most of our discussion, about operating, you know, how to run board meetings.
Yes.
Well, Jennifer, um...
Yeah.
One of the things I might add is that I've actually seen this presentation probably a couple times, and I, I think it's really helpful to have the three of you have that discussion. But sometimes what happens then is it's not always easy for the board president and superintendent to help the whole board get up to that level. But at some point in time, I think it would be reasonable to consider, I've seen Bob actually do this in a webinar, in an hour. I mean, one hundred and thirty-six slides, that's two plus hours. Then you can ask the questions of the person who has the background in the law and the guidelines, if there are any questions about the pieces. It's helpful to have it highlighted and to get your feeling about the things you think are important for us. But that doesn't necessarily collaborate us on this PowerPoint. And I was thinking, there was one, I think it was Stoughton where we attended, and people ask questions in the collaborative piece, as people were learning from each other, was extremely valuable. Uh, maybe the rest of the board doesn't want to, but this is, I think, an important part of us being the board goal, having us improve what we do and how we do it. It's just a thought.
Thank you.
I, well, I think that's the discussion we can have after we have this discussion, whether we need it, because what he did do that I liked, 'cause I did read through the whole thing, was he incorporated our current policies in it, which I think was really helpful. So it may be the thing you heard before, but it's different in that he added our specific policies. So I think he did a really nice job, so I'm, I'm ready to hear what your thoughts are, Jennifer, and I think we can go from there.
Well, yes and. Yes and.
It's where other people's concerned.
Well, it, um, what has struck me is the amount of time that we sometimes get into an argument about Robert's Rules for forty-five minutes, as opposed to getting after the work at hand. And so, I don't want this to become personal. I don't, I don't want it to do anything except to say we have a variety of perspectives and experience, and so as a board, for us to revisit our Robert's Rules, our use, because it should support our work, right? It should be a structure that fosters us, not trips us up. So I just appreciated that, if you've met Bob, he's very clear, right, in his, in his presentation. So, the pieces that I highlighted, I'm simply sharing those with you because they kind of jumped at me based on my previous years of experience, but your experience is different than mine, and that's why we're also inviting them. Would you please give feedback to Dan or myself? So here we go. In those pages, around sixty-four, sixty-five, and onwards, I appreciated that though it's our policy, it's still up to each individual board to decide to what extent and to what level of detail we want to be prescriptive. And then there's also the clarification between the, and I know we've touched on this before, but the large meeting or the large group versus the small meeting or small group. And I was struck by the idea that sometimes you just have kind of a, a previous practice that may not technically be even articulated in Robert's Rules, but it's an expectation of the board. And so, I'll just do a quick example. I'm hoping I'm not inviting an argument at this point, but I'm just gonna put it out there. There was perhaps a informal understanding that if you wanted to bring an amendment, that you would do so prior to the meeting, so that board members, right, would have an opportunity to read it and think about it. And so, is that something that's firm for us? Is it negotiable? Is it something we need to confirm in policy? We wanna leave it unwritten? I'm only using that as a quick example. Um, but to me...
But that's only related to policy, that we did that.
Correct. So what I'm saying is Bob Butler, in his information, highlights that as a board, even when you say we are going to abide by Robert's Rules, you're not exclusive to that, and you can have other agreements or procedures in place that help you do your work. And I'm just using that as a quick example because it's come up recently. There we go. I also appreciated the information sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, where he does a nice job of illuminating just basic decorum during a debate, and how we don't use names, we don't use colorful language, et cetera, et cetera. These are common sense, and I think many of them are already in our board norms. But I do appreciate the way it's kind of enumerated there. We've also had some thinking around, pardon me, to what extent do we want to structure our discussion time? Do we wanna set a time within a particular meeting? Do you want me to ask everyone two times, three times, and then close discussion? Do we want the board to vote on closing of discussion? So for me, that's an area that I think it would be helpful if board members could think about that, and we could have a conversation around that piece. Again, just so there's an agreement or a sense of expectation around discussion norms. Go ahead, Dan.
Does that mean we'd say, we'd take up item four? Let's, can we spend, maybe twenty minutes on it? Is that what you mean by time?
It is, and, and here's one of those places where do, do you want me to provide less structure, more structure? Generally, I try to make sure everyone's had at least two opportunities to chime in, and then if we're starting to just re-thread the same tire over and over again, it's, you know, it's really time. I need to, like, at least break in and say, if there's nothing new, let's, let's press forward.
I would suggest, I would suggest you offer a time, and everybody will have some nodding agreement ninety percent of the time. That's, you mind?
Yeah. So, thank you, Susan.
I like the way you're doing it. I think what's happened when we put the time in is it just blew up in our faces repeatedly. So, three or four board members would have a lot of questions in a particular area. It would look like we'd be done in ten minutes. We'd have forty slides, looked like we had an hour, and three hours later, because we were interested in the topic. So I think to start building consensus on setting a time, it's, it's gonna create tension. I like the way you've been running the meetings. I think the meeting that you just ran with the different opinions and the different discussions could have been much more difficult, and it appeared to me that everyone got to express an opinion, and there were responses to that, and it stayed respectful. But you, and, you know, and you let us go as close as you could, but you still had a timeframe.
Okay.
So, that's just my thought.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the feedback. Peter?
Well, my comment on the time would be that I think it's great for you to try and guide the board in terms of limiting the time, long, as long as the understanding is that ultimately, it's the board's decision. And if you wanna say, well, let's finish at eight, and the board wants to say, well, no, we could, we should go to nine. The board has an option to do that. But I certainly just think it's important, it's good for you to try and provide structure, if we could finish this topic in ten minutes, whatever. And, you know, and that's a great place, we could talk, maybe, and then later, but say, can we, can, does any... Um, and, you know, and that's a great place, we could talk about it in a sentence later, but say, can we, uh, can, does anybody object to us just going for another ten minutes on this topic? It's a great way to do it. But then, then, so long as it's an understanding that it's the board's decision at the end, and the president doesn't, against the board's wishes, just cut off.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Susan.
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of s- of suggesting a time when we get to a topic. I am in favor of when you start to hear repetitions saying something, and then saying, okay, we talked about this for a half hour. You think ten minutes or more, but that part I think is fine, so I guess I'm in between the two, 'cause I, I, I also like the way you've been conducting the meetings, and I think it's an, I, I agree with the comment that I think it'll create more tension, and we'll have more arguments if you, if we get to a topic, you say, okay, we're allowing twenty minutes for this. People are gonna be, oh, no, I won't, you know. I just think that's a mistake. But I think, I think when you and Dan plan a meeting, you kinda have a general idea of what you think will happen, and sometimes that's right, and sometimes it's gonna be longer. It's never gonna be shorter. But I, I think it's more a matter of encouraging that everybody to talk, you know, to make their comments, but then being aware when people start to repeat themselves. 'Cause we shouldn't be arguing with each other. You just make your point and move on. So that's, that's where I see your facilitation of stopping, move along, and yeah, I think you've been doing that well, so.
Thank you for all of that, um, and I'm taking notes. Um, I would also quickly, briefly point out that, um, right around slide seventy-nine, eighty, right in there, um, Bob has outlined the motions that he believes every board member should be familiar with. Um, and the one that jumped out at me was the, the point of information, which, um, it's one of those things where I'm sure I read it and just, you know, it's just not something I pick up quickly. But, um, I think often, um, what we're looking for is a point of information, and I'm, I'm not sure that we access that language. So, um, I would invite board members to please look at that list of motions, um, and see if there's any, like, further work or description or anything that we'd like to do around, around those. Um, yeah, so a little bit of that kind of, um, jumped out at me. So thank you for indulging me. Those were the, the pieces that we talked most about, I think. Have I left something?
I think just one small thing that, that, that really stuck to me, and what he said, that the courts have decided that, um, if you, the board mistakenly doesn't follow Roberts rules, for instance, you have a motion, and there's not a, no, there's not a second, but then you vote on it, that that is still a valid vote, um, that as long as the intent is clear of the board, that you're not gonna get hung up on procedural things like maybe other bodies might. So I, I thought that was interesting.
And, and I would comment that that's actually inherent in Roberts rules, says you don't have to use these particular words, as long as the intent is clear, um, to get to a particular result. It, it recommends a particular rule, you, where it's, to make sure it's clear, but it says, it does emphasize that you don't have to, as long as you get to a clear intent.
Um, yeah, I, I noticed that one too, and I agree with that. I, I, I know in the small groups, it says you don't have to have a second, and you don't have to make a motion.
I think because we are a legal body, and because the records are important, it is important to be clear, I would prefer to keep making motions in seconds. But it's good to know that if we make a mistake, and don't do a second on time with this. I know in committees, I've always felt like, 'cause they're advisory, 'cause I was just saying at our most recent policy meeting, you, we, we have, now that we actually have, we have two people in the committee, it made no sense to me to do a motion in second.
Would you say?
Now that we have, on committees, um, I am now, generally, when we approve something in the committee, I ask for a motion in a second, so there's a clear record in the committee too. I noticed in this last committee, I forgot to do that, but we had consensus, so I feel like I can, so we're recommending this. But I think where it's, um, the reason I think it is important to do that sometimes is to make it very clear what, that what the committee's thought is. And so, that, the other thing I noticed was the, um, w- i- he specifically uses an example of when you might use unanimous consent, um, with regard to the meeting order, which I thought was, which, you know, it makes sense to me to do that, but again, he also said, if there's a board member who's not comfortable with that, then go ahead and do the motion in a second. So anyway, that, I just wanted to point that out, 'cause that's something we've argued about too, and I thought that was clear in there, so I appreciate that you addressed that.
Okay, I'm not sure. Susan and then Peter. Okay.
Um, I, I think there, um, I think there are some very, because we're still a, a learning board, there are situations where there is a requirement for board approval, and the way that you document that generally in our policy is board approval is by motion. So I think, um, to generally find that is acceptable, understanding you might make a mistake once in a while.
Right.
And in fact, lots of times when board members are new, they like, kinda forget to vote, and you're kinda going, I don't know, are you voting? Uh, that, that's all understandable, but, um, when, for instance, if we're doing a contract, and we start fooling around, and we can't see our vote came out, or we're doing something that's really critically important, I think we need the vote, we need the second, and we need the vote recorded. Um, and I, I'm just saying, there are some statutory requirements, and because we don't know when we have those, um, I think the motion is clear. The other thing we were finding in, in the, um, committees was you couldn't tell what the committee had done, and what, so the chair might bring a report, and you say, well, did the committee support that? Or is that a policy that you guys all agreed to? Um, so the motion just makes it clear. And that's really a, a, even in committee, a clean when you do it. And a perfect example is in a committee where it's, you're making some pretty tough decisions that could be questions later, like in personnel, like in a personnel meeting, you know, you need to be able to say, we're, this committee approved this, and we are bringing this recommendation to the board.
So Susan, m- just to be clear, um, you were speaking to what happens in committee?
Vote. Absolutely vote.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Um, I'm encouraging that, um, when, generally, when we bring something to the board, um, we make a motion for it.
Right.
There's clear, yeah.
We should definitely do that, I think, I think.
Um, and I'm suggesting that some committees don't do that, and it's, um, if you're gonna make a recommendation to the board,
Right.
it's a lot clearer where everybody on that committee stands, rather than to walk in here and have the committee members argue about it, and then you go, well, I thought you guys approved this. So that's, it's a helpful step to take as you're bringing, um, advice to the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it's, oh, sorry.
Uh-huh. Um, uh, my comments, get back to unanimous consent, which we do use, and I'll give you some examples of where we recently used them.
Okay.
One is to change the order of the meeting, where we said, is, somebody said, well, if you move this up, and you look around and say, is that okay, everybody? That's unanimous consent. Another one where we've used it is somebody says, oh, I'd like the minutes to reflect this, um, instead of that, and you look around and say, okay, that's, and we, we essentially have approved those by unanimous consent. The problem is that Policy one sixty-seven point one says, all actions requiring a vote may be carried out by voice vote, show of hands, or roll call. And it excludes unanimous consent, even though Roberts considers unanimous consent a vote of the board. Um, and so there's a little bit of, at the very least, it's an ambiguity in the conflict between this Roberts unanimous consent and our policy. And I would suggest that we update our policy so that it adequately reflects, so that we can agree, 'cause we've had this debated for, before. Oh, you can't do that, because our policy says you have to voice, show of hands, or roll call. And I think what we need to do is to just adjust one sixty-seven point one, so that it allows, uh, unanimous consent in appropriate places.
May I, I don't agree. Okay, may, may I clarify for a moment?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, Peter, would you see that as especially important when it's on our agenda un- under the action items? Or would that just be at any point, the?
At any point.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, I, thank you.
Any point. Yeah.
And, and I, I don't agree. I think if you make the motion and vote, and you know where everybody stands.
Well, if, if, if I can, can I respond to that first, Susan?
Is that okay?
I mean, so when we rearrange the meeting, the order of the meeting, which is an item under there, are you saying we shouldn't use unanimous consent? We should actually have a vote?
Yep. And that's what we did that last time, you said, we don't need to do that, and we don't need a vote.
And? We have done it. We have re- we've, we have rearranged it in the past without a vote.
You're, you're, you're supporting consensus, I'm supporting a motion, so that it's very clear that the board supports it.
And we have added. Okay.
Because when you used to do consensus as president, it was not clear that there was consensus, except from a group. So I'm saying, this is the way you plan, right, so then you know what the numbers.
So may, thank, thank you.
You, unanimous consent is different from consensus.
Gotcha. May.
It's hard to read unanimous consent.
May I then ask the board to please have each of us think about where and how we would prefer to do uni- unanimous consent, if I can say it properly?
Unanimous consent.
Well, I just, if we have differences, then we need to process that and.
And.
Well, yeah, at, as Bob Butler said in his presentation, if there's a board member who's not comfortable with it, and who wants to vote, you do a vote.
Yeah, thank you, Susan.
So it might be as simple as that. It might not be a required adjustment.
That's right.
Um, if we're finished at that time, we could talk about it again at some point.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to talk about the amendment thing, and it does say in, uh, one thirty-one point one,
Which page?
And the, and the point here was about substantive amendments. If there's, um, a policy where
Yeah.
there's a typo or something, a simple clerical amendment, I don't think we need to see that ahead of time. It's more if you're going to make an amendment to a policy or to something that's coming up where it changes substantively something about the policy. What our policy says is, bylaws and policies excluding those dictated by statutes or rules of the DPI or ordered by the State Department of Public Instruction or a court of competent authority may be adopted, amended, and repealed at any meeting of the board, provided the proposed adoption, amendment, or repeal shall have been proposed in writing at a previous board meeting. So that is what our current policy says. The intent there was if it's a substantive change, certainly not if it's a minor thing. So I, you know, that's something we can talk about. I personally would argue for leaving that in for a substantive change, 'cause I think we've had some past experience in the distant past, but we had a, a very negative experience where a very significant policy change was made, and there was a lot of confusion among the board, and it came in at the last minute, it wasn't written, and I, and that's what led to this. And so I would argue for keeping that for amendments in general, where it's possible to have it previously, so that you have an idea. And you know, usually recently, when we've had discussions, I'm trying to think of these recent policies, we've had discussions at the board meeting, and then we've brought it. And that's, that also counts, I think, as long as you, as long as it, the point is the board needs to have time to think about it. There should never be, in my opinion, a substantive change coming up at a meeting and getting voted on at that meeting. But that was the point, to avoid that.
Thank you, um, thank you.
But that's, that's all that changed.
Right, and I think particularly when it's not pressing or timely, that it's perfectly acceptable to move it to the next meeting
Right. Right.
to, to bring it up again, or if we have that, that opportunity. Gotcha. All right. Yes, Susan?
Um, not to take you back, but, um, on, what was that, page seventy-six, or, um, that all board members should generally know or understand, point of information, parliamentary, or, or, or appeal to spin the rules adjournments. Um, it'd be nice to hand that out with a definition, because you're assuming that everybody in this room knows what that means. Based on our past actu- well, I thought you said you thought that was important, and we did.
Correct, and that's why I'm asking that we revisit that list individually, to see what, what is our individual comfort level? Where might we need either examples or further learning?
Well, if you, if you want us to know, I.
He, he does explain them here. I was just trying to find it.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
I would, I would just, you know, then you're gonna say, okay, I want all seven of you to go back, and if you don't know what these are, and then you're relying on us to do it. Why don't you just come in and give us a sheet of paper and say, here it is, we expect you to know this.
Slide eighty-one, maybe two.
Okay.
I am actually not making that request. I was simply sharing that I felt Bob's list was helpful to frame what we might have responsibility for,
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that through your feedback to myself or to Dan, if you would like further training or examples or conversation around any of it, um, let's, let's support that. But I ca- yeah, so I'm just looking, we're looking for feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Are we good?
I think so.
I have one more comment, which is, um, how you handle disagreements about the rules.
Okay.
The answer, how the board handles disagreements about the rules, and the answer is that the president gets to make a ruling about, if there's a disagreement, someone should raise a point of order or other, no, you can't do it that way, and raise the issue with the, um, with the president. And the president gets to make a decision. If you disagree with the decision, as is pointed out here, there's a way to deal with it, which is you s- you ask, because ultimately the rules belong to the board, not the president. The president is sort of the interpreter in the first half, parliamentarian. Um, uh, but let the president make, if you disagree with it, there's a process where you can, uh, appeal the decision, I'm sorry, what's, appeal from the decision.
Appeal.
From the decision, and ask the board to say, so if somebody says, I don't think we can use unanimous consent here, and the prior president can say,
Side eight.
Um, I, I rule that yes, it's okay to use unanimous consent. If you disagree with that, you can say, I'd like to make the appeal if you get a second, and we. And by the way, there's, um, uh, Roberts actually lays out a discussion for that in an appeal for the decision from the appeals officer. Society officer gets to start at the beginning and the end, and everybody else gets to speak once. And that's to keep from it becoming a two-hour discussion, which is the way it would be and, and used to hold up the process. Um, but Roberts actually lays that out, uh, for those appeals.
And I would point out, that'd be an example you wouldn't have to follow, but, but this, like, this, what he says here is, any two members have the right to make a, to appeal.
Yeah.
And this occurs by one making the appeal the other second again, and then you vote. Um.
Right.
The unanimous consent thing, if, if the, if a board member really objects to that and says simply, I request a vote, that's when you simply vote.
That's a bad example.
If they, yeah, so that's, that is a bad example, but there are other times when we've had those kinds of things, so it's, yeah. But I, I agree with you, these two slides are helpful, people, pay attention.
Yeah. Susan, and then we'll check on.
Okay, on the issue of point of order, I think it's really helpful to bring that up, because what we generally do is we argue for fifteen minutes, and then call, then, I can tell you, go back and look, I mean, it's probably not in the minutes, but I bet point of order would have been appropriate at least once in every single meeting we've had, and we don't use it. So I'm saying, if we under- maybe if the board understood it better, it's kinda like learning the rules about the, how to respond to our view of a suspension. Um, if we understood it better, it might be a jungler thing for us to use, rather than to feel like, point of order, point of order, when the fight's already started. So that might be helpful.
Thank you. So if you have further thoughts, please, um, contact Dan and/or myself, and, um, I think through conversation, we'll take that direction as far as next steps. Thank you, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Just switching screens, there we go. All right. And that takes us to our second item in the discussion section, um, a first reading of revised board policies. And I'd be happy to read it, or have you take it away, either way?
Um, I, yeah, well, I'd, I'd be willing to do that, just 'cause, uh, the A three thirty.
What do you?
Um, this is the one you'll remember on student markets, which we did recently approve, but we had raised a concern about third-party requests for directory information.
All right. Mm-hmm.
So if you scroll down the policy to the section where there's directory information, and then you go to letter A, right after that, we did it at our recent policy meeting, discussed this more, and I had called Dan Mallon, who's Legal Counsel and Policy Counsel at WSB, about the way different districts are handling this, and there are basically two ways you can legally do this. You can either limit what's, what is directory information, you can reduce what, what is incorporated in that, but that gets tricky for various reasons, and parents have to opt in, and it gets very confusing. Or you can limit third-party access, and we decided to go with limiting third-party access, which is kinda what we did before. But we tried to flesh out the wording more, so that it wouldn't just be for profit-making purposes, that it'll be released. Uh, this is based on the board discussion we had, and the, and the sense I got from the board was that you were interested in doing this. So the only change now is that directory information shall not be released for commercial or promotional purposes. Commercial shall be defined as the intent or design to make a financial profit or gain. Promotional shall be defined as contributing to the growth or prosperity of the party making the request. Um, yeah, and I, so I, I think, so that, that was the idea, that, um, we didn't want people soliciting our students for various things. And the only thing we, we did talk about things like with the high school, the Justin's, if there's cap and gown thing, information, we figured that could be pushed out through the front campus. Is that how that, I mean, if there were information, if there was commercial information, rather than giving them a list of seniors, for example, could we take their information and send it to parents? Do you know how it's usually done now, or?
I don't.
Okay, I just get, yeah.
Yeah, and that, for my.
'Cause that, 'cause this would interfere with that if it's not done that way. Cause that, cause this wouldn't interfere with that if it's not done that way.
Yeah, and my recollection was back in the day before we had electronic communication,
Right.
that, that was common for, you know, classrooms and so on, that they would get lists of names and addresses and mail things. I'm pretty certain now that that doesn't happen anymore, that we just pass information along to the families.
Yeah, in the school setting, and I think people go through the website, but, so, we meet the kids and everything's distributed, right?
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's kinda what I, I would.
I don't know if Jostons contact his parents directly, in some cases or not, I don't know all the time, I hate it.
Okay, well, with this policy, they wouldn't be able to, they'd have to, but if the school says the representatives will be here at such, such a date, or I don't know if they do that anymore, it's just the website or how that works. But if that becomes an issue, we might have to change it, cause that was the only exception we could think of for that. Um, otherwise we'd, we'll, it's accomplished the purpose we were trying to achieve, so. So this, yeah, would be on, this is just for discussion and thought, too many of them.
So we'll try to verify that, that's not a problem with our current, before we vote on it.
Between them, right, yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
And then the next one, the school nutrition services, that was a result of Neola, another renewal update, we just approved this, if you'll remember. Um, to get reimbursed for meals served at the school, um, you have to follow certain guidelines and if students have different meals, they used to use the word disability and they're moving away from that because some students have allergies and different things that aren't really disabilities. So the, the three changes to this policy really were removing the word disability and making it clear that there are medical reasons why students might have different meals. And then another one was that you can't have competitive foods sold within thirty minutes of the end of the school day, not lunch. That's a change in the USDA policy, so that was a change in the policy. And the last change was under legal sites, the second legal site here, which doesn't show up as a new change, but it is, um, it's just an additional legal site, that's it. That was the three changes, so. So they're all pretty much legal things, so if anybody has a question about them, otherwise we'll blow on those at the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you, um, that'll take us to future meeting dates. And those are, are our, so, so.
Cause we have our string of board workshops, only one more to go, um, prior to the next meeting and that will be where our administrative team will be presenting our year one, uh, results of strategic plan, including, you know, data and how we do with the year one goals and so on, as well as what, uh, our recommendations are for year two.
And what's there on?
On the twenty-third of August.
Oh, that's right, that's.
Yeah, so.
Do you have any writing?
Yes.
Yeah. Right. All right, so at this time we need to have a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five, friends one, friends C, for the consideration and deliberation of our superintendent evaluation for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
So, no.
Thank you, a second?
Exactly.
Thank you.